Okay, we will call to order the meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 6th, 2020. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight is, we meet in, one is being recognized as one of the most trying periods in American history with the Corona disease striking our country and killing many on a day-to-day basis. Our country under basically a martial law type of atmosphere. We're ever mindful of the many challenges and demands and requirements that we are now faced with as a government. And we just ask for guidance and blessings and understanding as we weight ourselves through this very challenging period of time. We ask for understanding by all those who are under us, and we ask for vision and great appreciation for all those who are in the leadership roles throughout our country and nation and state and cities as we move forward and overcome this dreaded problem. Tonight, we just ask for the hands of those in the heavens above to help us understand and reach our conclusion to this terrible vision that is now before us. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon the entire world as we go about ridding our world of this dreaded problem. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Tonight with the City Council, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic of America. Unnationed, under God, indivisible, eternal, and justiciable. And ask the city clerk if she will call the roll, please.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopp?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Darren?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Ellihan?
Here.
Meifler? Meifler? Malley?
Here.
Yor?
Here.
Daron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Can I ask for Meifler again?
So I think in some form or fashion, we have all 14 have indicated that they're on the call. Is that what I'm hearing?
I did not hear from Meifler, but I believe he's on the call.
Yeah, that's what I understand. He is having some technical difficulty. I want to, I want to begin this tonight by just making a couple of statements. First of all, I want to take my hat off and fondue sentiment of appreciation to Howard Jason, our city IT director. He is undertaking a monumental task of trying to bring all this together so that all the members of the City Council could communicate and have a meeting while we still abided by all the rules that would come down upon us by the state and federal government for separation. This is going to be a very challenging meeting for us all to participate in because we're not talking directly to each other. We hopefully will be able to understand, but we're not in the same room. We have technology that's here trying to carry us, and we could all at any moment suffer a breakdown, and that's why I had asked Howard to be with us throughout the meeting tonight. So if anything does happen, we will try as quickly as possible to get everything resumed as to wherever it was stopped at. Tonight, as a community, I think we are making a moment of history here because as far as I know, this has never been done in the city of Batavia before from the City Council's perspective where we had a meeting like this. And so I would hope that this is just a short-lived experience. I myself am very wary of us doing government this way. It's not the way we normally do it. We are totally always above board, and I'm, we're trying to be as above board as we can in this meeting, but this is presenting some challenges to us. So I, I just want to let everybody know that we certainly need to refrain from going off too wild here because we really need to keep the community in, in focus and let them understand what's going on. And we want to certainly show that we are a community that is wanting to work together both with ourselves and with our state and our nation as we overcome the questions that are before us in our world. So tonight, I thank you all for participating, and so I would, and we've had the roll call, so I want to remind, remind everybody to please speak into the microphone. And I want to turn it over to Howard. Do you have any further comments you'd like to make about the format of the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, Elliot, we can hear you now.
Thank you. Yes, I was at the roll call.
If the clerk could please mark Elliot as present.
Done, thank you.
Thank you.
Howard, you would like to add to the meeting situation here?
The only thing I will say is that for those attending at home, and if you are on a computer or a tablet, I believe you should see a hand icon in the upper right corner of your screen. At each item on the agenda, I believe the mayor will ask if anybody has any questions. And if you select that icon, we will unmute the microphone to allow you to ask your question. I believe at the end of that, if you are on by phone and you don't have that video, we will try and unmute all the microphones for a few moments to let anybody else speak if they have a question. Okay?
All right. Moving then to item number four on our agenda, which is the reminder to please speak into the microphone. And then tonight, it's very important that we try to speak, and if anybody's having a problem, that we let each other, everyone ever know so that we can have Howard and anybody else that's involved in this trying to deal with it. So with that, we would like to go to item five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have anything to see me?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Okay. Moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, would you do that?
Your Honor, this agenda reads as follows. Acceptance placed on file, the committee of the whole minutes from February 25th, 2020. Approvals, the March 20th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $866,113.57 and the April 3rd payroll in the amount of $884,115.3. City Council minutes for March 2nd, 2020, March 16th, 2020, and the March 16th, 2020 emergency meeting. Resolution 20-47-R requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for the 2020 farmers market special event. Resolution 20-48-R requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of Route 31 for the 2020 July 4th firework display special event. Resolution 20-49-R requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for the 2020 Batavia Dinner Table special event. Resolution 20-50-R requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for the 2020 Downtown Block Party and Classic Car Show special event. Resolution 20-51-R requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for the 2020 BHS Homecoming Parade special event. Resolution 20-52-R requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for Oktoberfest special event. Resolution 20-53-R authorization for the purchase of trucking in the amount $115,040 from Henderson Products Incorporated. Resolution 20-54-R authorizing the draw on letters of credit for the property at 1780 Hubbard Avenue. Resolution 20-24, amending the city municipal, I'm sorry, amending the city of Batavia zoning code Title 10 of the city code related to sign regulations. And ordinance 20-28, amending the 2020 payment for ESDA volunteer members. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second? Knopp? Moved by Alderman Chantet. I didn't get who the second was.
Knopp.
Okay, very good. I'm showing on my agenda that I've got four more items on here. On the second page, do you have those, Dan?
Your Honor, I don't. That's what I have.
Okay, I, yeah, I, all right, I messed up. That goes around, I think, cut my page off here, so, yeah, we got it all, so, okay, very good. All right, we have a motion and second for the approval of the items on the consent agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to talk about any of these or take one off or anything? Chair, her, none. The clerk will call the roll, and the consent agenda is presented.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellihan?
Aye.
Meifler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Daron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopp?
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved by vote of 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody out there that's wanting to speak?
I've just unmuted all.
Mayor, I have not received any questions through email from anybody from the public.
All right. All right, well, we'll give this just another second or two, see if anybody's trying to hook on here, but it doesn't sound like it, so. All right, then, let's go to item number eight, which is the Batavia Chamber.
Is Margaret Perro on the call?
I'm sorry, folks, we are having a technical difficulty. Please be with me. Give me just one moment. Okay, can people hear me?
I hear you, Howard.
I hear you. I just unmuted Margaret Perro.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. This is Margaret Perro, Batavia Chamber. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Margaret. Thank you.
I hear you, Margaret.
Great, thanks. Hey, I just want to let you know that Batavia Chamber is working. We are working remotely, but my staff and I are working very hard to help our chamber members in our community survive the impact of the COVID-19 virus. I am working with the Aurora, the Geneva, and St. Charles Chamber Executive Directors, a group of Western suburban chamber execs, and the Greater Illinois Chambers of Commerce. We are coming together in this time of unprecedented challenges to share resources, help build community, and champion small business needs across the state. I've been in contact with our state and federal legislators to talk about what is happening to our local businesses. I've been on many conference calls to advocate for what our businesses need. Chamber is distributing information on a daily basis on what the federal and state economic stimulus packages provide to our businesses, and the Chamber is being a conduit for information for how our businesses can get help. The Chamber is updating our website regularly with the latest information on what we can do to help our business community. We are also regularly offering webinars for our members for them to learn how to access aid. This afternoon, I was on a call with the Department of Labor and the Illinois Department of Employment Securities, and I'll be sharing those details of our call tomorrow. Today, we also hosted a virtual program on what the Paycheck Protection Program is and how businesses can access the federal funds and the loan forgiveness requirements. We also have many upcoming informative events. Please see our website for more information and to register for these events. On Tuesday, April 7th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., the Chamber will be offering a webinar called COVID-19 Small Business Guidance and Loan Resources. This is the SBA, the Small Business Administration. Their webinar will discuss the small business relief efforts, including the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, the CARES Act, the Paycheck Protection Program, SBA loans, and the Illinois Small Business Emergency Loan Fund. On Tuesday, April 7th, from 2:00 to 4:15 p.m., we will have our first of a four-series webinar regarding leading through crisis. It's a virtual mastermind group that will be hosted on Tuesdays and Thursdays, April 7th, 9th, 14th, and 16th. This is a mastermind group that will help you learn practical ways to maneuver through times of difficulty and adversity and develop successful thinking habits. On Wednesday, April 8th, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., the Chamber will be hosting its monthly Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club. It will be a virtual networking session, so you could join us from your home office, your kitchen table, or your couch, but it will still help businesses build professional relationships and gain access to new opportunities. On April 8th, at 10:00 to 10:45 a.m., the Chamber will be hosting a webinar with the Daily Herald regarding marketing your business in a time of crisis. On Wednesday, April 8th, from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m., we will be hosting a webinar with the Department of Commerce Economic Opportunity Director, Erin Guthrie, and the Illinois Chamber of Commerce for Small Business Owners. This will be, this will be an opportunity to learn more about the state and federal programs being offered to our small businesses at this time. On Wednesday, April 15th, at 11:00 a.m., we will be having a managing a remote workforce during COVID-19 and beyond, provided by IT experts, and they'll talk about how to effectively work remotely, collaborate with your team, productivity, and they'll also cover fending off cyber threats. On Wednesday, April 15th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., we'll be hosting a webinar called Navigating Small Business Ownerships Through the COVID-19 Regarding Anxiety. Matt Coles, the owner of Prairie Wellness Counseling, is hosting a virtual meeting to local business owners to have a space to discuss methods and strategies to cope with owning a business during the current pandemic. A brief presentation will be followed by a facilitated discussion. We will also have our not-for-profit forum on Wednesday, May 6th. That will be a Zoom meeting. We do that each month, and it's been quite a resource for our not-for-profits to be able to collaborate. Like I mentioned, all of these webinars, you could go to get more information at our website. Some of them require registration, so go to www.bataviacamber.org. Also, I encourage everyone to follow us on Facebook to find out other pertinent information that can help you survive these difficult times. We're, throughout the day, we're posting information that we know will be helpful to our community and to our businesses. We are currently also working on a program with the chambers across the state to promote a shop local, I love, I love Illinois, I love local program. That will be a statewide initiative to encourage people to shop locally. It will be held April 11th through the 18th. Each dollar you spend at a local business returns 50 times money, 50 times more money to your local academy. So we're encouraging people that, especially during this week, to buy a gift card to, to our favorite local restaurants, stores, or service providers, and find a way, a virtual way to support our local owners. We also encourage this week for people to get social and share Facebook and Instagram posts of our local businesses and write them a positive review on Yelp and Facebook and Google. This will help lift spirits and increase our businesses' online presence during this time. Also, when you're ordering out, we encourage people to pay it forward and order from your favorite restaurants and tip generously to support their employees because every little bit helps during this time. Another thing I want to mention is that we have extended our deadline for, for scholarship applications that the Chamber is providing to four Batavia High School seniors. So if you know anybody looking to go off to college in the fall, encourage them to look through the website for more information about getting a $750 scholarship. Each one is worth $750, so we're proud to still provide that. I just want to say, I know we are a strong community, and I'm confident we're going to weather this storm together. We're pulling together and showing our fortitude. Coronavirus will one day be behind us, and I look forward to celebrating with all of you together. So I want to encourage you to save the date for the Batavia Chamber golf outing on Friday, August 28th. That's all I have. If anybody has questions, please feel free to call me. My chamber number goes to my cell phone at 630-879-7134, and my chamber email is margaret@bataviacamber.org. Thank you very much for letting me join your meeting tonight. Do you have any questions?
Any questions to Margaret? Thank you, Margaret, for a very succinct report. I appreciate your commitment and dilemma, and the Chamber certainly is a very strong partner to have at a time like this in the history of our community. So thank you for what you are and what the Chamber has become.
Mayor, this is Laura Newman. May I make a comment about Margaret's presentation?
Certainly.
I would just like to say what an amazing partner that the Chamber of Commerce has been. Here at the city, we try to cover everyone, not only our businesses, but our citizens and, and all the different types of services that we're providing to the community. But Margaret and her team over there have done an amazing job, not only of putting out information that changes on a daily basis. They find the very best way to present that information in a way that businesses can use. In addition to that, every single day, they provide programs, webinars, connecting our local businesses with experts like the Small Business, the Small Business Assistance through Wabasi Community College and Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center, and they're just doing an outstanding job, and I think they deserve our praise.
Thank you very much, Laura. It's very nice to hear. We are just happy to help in any way we can. We're here for, for the community.
Again, thank you, Margaret, and the Chamber for all that you do and continue to do to make Batavia a great place for us all to live and do business and raise families and do the stuff that makes us a very special town, and you guys are a very exciting part of that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving then to item number nine, which is ordinance 20-29, declaring a state of disaster that extends the length of the Illinois gubernatorial declared state of emergency and extending the mayor's emergency powers for the same period of time. Who's got this one? Is this Alderman Chantet? Do you have this?
I don't. I believe this was with Laura.
Laura, you have it?
I don't know if she lost the connection.
She forgot to turn her microphone on. That classic mistake. So I'll, I'll begin again. Ordinance 2029 really follows up on ordinance 2027, which the City Council adopted on March 16th, which was declaring a state of, a local state of disaster and giving emergency powers to the mayor under our city code. The suggestion of Kevin Drundle, rather than continue to adopt this each city council meeting, a suggestion was made to adopt an ordinance that extends our state of disaster the length of the gubernatorial declared state of emergency and extending the mayor's emergency powers for the same period. And so just presenting this to you today at this point would extend the declaration of disaster and the mayor's emergency powers through April 30th of 2020, or if that state of emergency should be extended by the governor for that period.
Hey, do we have any discussion on this?
I do have a question. So anything that gets, that would be done during this time, does that come back to City Council at a later point for a, a complete vote, or is this just stuff that's permanent and forever without any commenting from the rest of the City Council?
I would defer to Newman to answer that question. The things that have been passed thus far are only for the period of the gubernatorial executive orders.
Yeah, I don't.
So they're temporary.
I don't interpret any of this to extend beyond the gubernatorial emergency power period. I don't think anything becomes a permanent directive or anything here without the council's approval. So I would suggest that this is strictly regulated by the fact that we're just following in line with the state's Emergency Power Act and extending our emergency powers to that same period of time whenever that relaxes itself.
Yeah, Mark, to otherwise answer your question, what, anything the mayor would do under this ordinance would still come back to the City Council for approval or ratification after every single, at every single council meeting. So if there's something the mayor does to an executive order under this ordinance that the council does not approve of, they can take action at the next council meeting.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mark. Your Honor, I just have, Your Honor, I just have a comment.
Certainly.
I had made some remarks at the last meeting regarding, that I trusted you implicitly, and I appreciate the difficult decisions that you have to make. And further, I, I use the word curfew, and I recognize that that probably was a bit more of a divisive word because I did get a lot of flack from it either online or in person or by telephone calls, but I recognize that times have changed very rapidly over the last several weeks, and that states individually are imposing their own stay-at-home orders, and that was the spirit I was looking for. So I appreciate each state recognizing that and encouraging people to stay home is probably the best thing that we can do right now.
Thank you for that. Just to bring the council, before we vote on this, just to bring the council up to what's happened since the last time we voted on this and had the discussion about the only action of an emergency nature that I felt I should take happened, I believe it was two weeks ago on a Sunday, when we had some folks out on West Main Street there, just to the west of the car wash at Randall and Wilson, at Randall and Main, and they were, had been hired to burn off the conservation area that's there just to the east of the Holy Cross parking lot. And suddenly, my cell phone started ringing, and I was getting a number of calls from residents in both the Tanglewood subdivision and in the Weaver Landing subdivision because the wind at the time was out of the east and it was blowing into those two subdivisions. And it was largely a complaint about all this smoke being blown into their neighborhoods when they're all hunkering down and trying to maintain a healthy environment. And so based on that comment, I issued a directive that, to the fire department specifically, that we not approve any further burn-offs of wildlife or natural areas or anything of that nature until such time as the governor's order has been released because it certainly goes in contrary to what I think residents are expecting to happen. And so that's the only action I've taken to this point in time, and as far as I know, we've not had any other burn-offs, I'll call it, on land in Batavia since this incident. So I think it has worked, and the people in the subdivisions that join these, I think, are appreciative that we aren't allowing for the burn-off of, you know, moose grass and wetland and whatever. So I think we've, trying to answer a question which the directive will end as soon as the governor's restrictions end, and we will be back to normal business.
And this is Laura. Oh, go ahead.
Can I just ask a clarification from Roman, where you said the, at the next council meeting, we would grant or withdraw the emergency powers enacted? Would that mean if we don't vote on anything, we're just assenting to them? Or do we have to affirmative? Or do we have to affirmatively say yes or no to the already existing ones from the past week?
Way I interpret the ordinance is that if the council is not going to take action, you're implicitly authorizing and agreeing with the past actions of the mayor. You could always guess, take an affirmative voting, we agree with these, what he did, but in the interest of time and efficiency, if you don't take any actions, it's being implicit, understanding an agreement as to the actions the mayor has taken.
Okay, thank you.
So do we add that? Well, I just wondered, do we add that as a line item? Because much like consent, that if everybody's good, then whether we add it to consent, I guess, and then we can remove it from consent if somebody wanted a greater discussion about something. Just to make sure that they're still talked about in the public forum.
Sure.
So what would we do? Have a motion? If somebody had a motion to consent to the idea of the controlled burn-off restrictions until such time as the emergency is over?
Almost.
Have a motion and second then on consent to the oral proclamation on burn-offs? Any further discussion? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf? Wolf? Aaron?
Aye.
O'Brien? O'Brien? Callahan?
Aye.
Meitler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Laron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller? Miller? Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopp?
Aye.
So I got no response from Miller, Wolf, or O'Brien.
So some folks, pardon me, this is Howard Shason. Some folks have their microphones self-muted, which we appreciate, helps keep the noise down. But during the vote, I believe you have to turn them on. And I believe that there is a, should be a microphone button on the left-hand side of the control panel. I believe that is part of the problem.
Can they vote by chat by any chance?
Let's see.
I see O'Brien says aye. Roman, is that legal for them to vote by chat?
This is Wolf. I'm here.
Okay.
And I say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen, this is Roman. To kind of answer a question, honestly, I don't know. This is kind of a new realm for everybody. I may have to go look at the governor's orders in this regard to specifically answer that question, but given the circumstances, as long as you're comfortable that it's actually Alderman O'Brien that's texting the chat, we can count that.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm waiting on Miller. Okay, so I guess I have 13 yes and no, no, and zero no's.
Yeah, that was the motion for the consent to the actions taken. I still, then we still have to have another vote on submission to continuing the length of time of the declaration of the emergency powers.
Yes, we also still have two other executive orders. So the one that you just voted on was Executive Order 20-02. Executive Order 20-01 is, reads as follows. The Illinois Liquor Commission recently relaxed its regulations to allow local liquor control authorities the power to establish with packaged liquor or service on-premises liquor licenses to conduct home delivery during the period of time the governor has ordered the closure of all Illinois bars and dine-in sections of restaurants. By virtue of my authority as liquor commissioner of the city of Batavia, I hereby state liquor code provisions prohibiting remote sales, delivery to homes in curbside delivery and order that all Batavia businesses with either a packaged liquor or a service on-premises liquor license are, as of the date and time of this order, permitted to conduct delivery until such time as the governor lifts the order that all bars and dine-in restaurants in the state of Illinois be closed with qualifications. The deliveries may only be made within the Batavia city limits. The delivery person must verify that the person accepting the delivery is at least 21 years old by checking photo identification in accordance with the governor's executive order at Chubb's Liquor on Premises. And that is Executive Order 20-01.
I move, we approve Executive Order 001.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of ordinance 20-001. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, this is Wolf. I have one question or just a statement, I guess. One question I have is sometimes there are, I have seen that there are deliveries of alcohol that are not a sealed package, whether it be a glass or a cup that's being sold with a mixed drink. People just need to be very aware that I believe that is illegal, especially if you're picking it up in a car at curbside delivery.
Yes. Right. This is Laura Newman. Some cities in Illinois had at first allowed that and then the Liquor Control Commission came out with guidance to municipalities that under the Illinois Liquor Code, that that was not permitted.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that was out there so that nobody gets, leaves a restaurant after trying to help a business out and ends up getting a ticket for it.
Right.
Very good point. Any other comments on that before we have the vote?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say that this first order was well-received by the public and business owners. I think this one was a good one.
Very good. Anybody else? Hey, I asked the clerk to call the roll then on ordinance 20-001.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Laron? Laron? McFadden?
Aye. I am Sharon.
Thank you. Miller? Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Present.
Knopp?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Let's check chat.
O'Brien votes aye by chat. I still have no response from Miller. Okay, so I have 12 aye, one present, and one no vote.
So the ordinance, 20-001 is approved.
Okay, and there is one more, which is Executive Order 20-03. The mayor, under the authority of emergency powers granted to him under city code title 5, Chapter 1, Section 3, and approved by city council on March 16th, 2020, declares by executive order that the requirement of publicly opened bids may be suspended during the state of emergency and an electronic means of opening bids may be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and second. And Laura, when you gave that ordinance number, you broke up, so I didn't get it written down.
It's Executive Order 20-03.
20-03.
Yes.
Any further discussion on Executive Order 20-03? Let's have the clerk call the roll then on that, please.
Yor?
Aye.
Laron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller? I don't know if that's a yes or a no. Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopp?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
O'Brien? O'Brien votes aye by chat. Callahan?
Aye.
Meitler?
Aye.
Malley? Malley?
Aye.
Miller, one more time? Okay, I have 13 yes and one no vote.
So Executive Order 20-03 is approved by a vote of 12 yes, one no vote, and one, 13 yes and one no, or one not voting.
Correct.
Okay. All right, moving then to item 10, which is Resolution 20-055-R, initiating the submission of a public.
Your Honor?
Yes.
We did not vote on 2029 yet.
All right, okay. We then have to vote on the ordinance 2029, which is declaring a state of disaster that extends the length of the state of Illinois's gubernatorial declaration of state of emergency and extending the mayor's emergency powers for the same period. Any further discussion on that one?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Clerk call the roll.
McFadden, was your move?
No, I think it was, it was Knopp.
Knopp?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Knopp?
Aye.
Chancet? Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
O'Brien? O'Brien votes aye. Callahan?
Aye.
Meitler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Laron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller? Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
That was 13 aye and one no vote again.
Okay, motions approved. Okay, now moving to 10, Resolution 20-055-R, initiate submission of a public referendum question on whether the city of Batavia should allow the sale of recreational adult-use cannabis within its jurisdictions. Alderman Chancet, do you have this under governmental services?
We made it, Dan.
I can take it.
Laura, you gonna take it?
Yeah, if that's all right with Dan.
Yep, sorry, my phone glitched. Thank you.
No problem, no problem. So earlier, council had a discussion regarding whether recreational adult-use cannabis dispensaries should be allowed within the city limits. And at the conclusion of that discussion, they decided to allow this to be a referendum question on the November ballot. So in cooperation with the city attorney working with Roman Sekul, he researched what other cities have adopted as questions and has developed the following. Shall the city of Batavia allow the sale of recreational adult-use cannabis within its jurisdiction subject to statutorily permissible restrictions? Yes or no? And he also researched, because I know that the city council preferred that this referendum, one that is binding. However, the city attorney's research says that a binding referendum question may only be used if it's allowed by the constitution or the state statute specifically authorizing the referendum. And in this case, neither of those is true. So it does have to be an advisory referendum, which of course you could, on your own accord, say that you're going to act as the referendum, whatever the people decide. So staff recommends approval of Resolution 20-55-R, which would initiate the submission of a public referendum question on whether the city of Batavia should allow the sale of recreational used cannabis within its jurisdiction.
Okay, any discussion or a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of Resolution 20-55-R.
Should we allow any, see if we have any public questions on that? I don't know if anybody has raised their hand. Howard, can you see?
I am looking. I don't see anybody.
Okay.
I do have one, although it went down.
That was Keenan Miller.
For, I can't tell the et, Miller. I am trying to allow you to speak. It looks like you're self-muted. Do you have a comment?
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. No, I'm aye for all the rest of the ones I missed.
Thank you, Keenan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, the clerk to call the roll then.
I'm sorry, who made the motion on that? It's hard for me to.
Wolf.
Thank you. Okay, Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
O'Brien? O'Brien votes aye. Callahan?
Aye.
Meitler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Laron? Laron?
It's showing offline.
Aye.
Okay. Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopp?
Aye.
Chancet? Chancet? Okay, so I have 12 yes and two no vote.
Does that mean two not voting? Or were there no? I didn't hear any no's.
I'm sorry, there were no no's. Two that did not register.
The motion would be approved based on that vote.
Yes.
Okay, moving then to item number 11, which is Resolution 20-057-R, approved task order number seven for the Siemens Northeast Distribution Substation. That's generally Alderman O'Brien's area.
Your Honor, this is Alderman Meitler.
Yeah, go ahead.
Your Honor, I'll take this one as, I understand Alderman O'Brien is having some audio difficulties. So this is Resolution 20-057-R, looking for an authorization of a task order number seven to Siemens to start up and commission Eaton 15KV vacuum switchgear lineup, Meyer's 38KV vacuum switchgear lineup, Outdoor Pennsylvania Transformer, two Siemens SD7 vacuum breakers, and associated disconnects at the Northeast Distribution Substation for an amount not to exceed $77,100. This is budgeted item underneath the 2020 budget. You'll see the account number listed in the agenda item there. This is basically a continuation of some work here that's trying to wrap up here in April of 2020. With that being said, hopefully everybody read the agenda item. I'll open the floor for any questions or discussion.
Any questions?
Is Rob or Gary in the room, if they are on the call, excuse me, that they wanted to add anything further? Okay. With that, uh, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Are you making such?
So moved.
I will.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and second for the approval of Resolution twenty dash zero, five, seven, dash, R. Approving task order number seven for the Siemens Northeast Distribution Substation. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Meitler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Yur?
Hi.
Theron? McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Knopf?
Hi.
Chanset? Wolf?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
O'Brien? O'Brien votes aye. Callahan?
Hi.
So twelve votes, twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes and two that we didn't get a votes from.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Motion's approved. Okay, moving to twelve, which is the administrative report, Laura.
Okay, just making sure my microphone is on this time. Um, we have a tremendous amount, um, going on here at the city in response to the COVID-nineteen, um, pandemic. Um, from having to adjust the operations of various city departments in order to make sure that we can, uh, sustain operations under the expectation that at, at some, some of our staff may be infected. Uh, we have to preserve our, continue to provide the vital services that the community expects. And numerous departments throughout the city, and in every department, adjustments have been made, uh, to rotate personnel, um, and to maximize the possibility for social distancing. As well, some of our departments have, um, adjusted their business operations as well, such as in development where they are still accepting applications for permits, but we are not currently, um, issuing new permits for, um, things that would not be able to inspect, such as the interiors of, um, residential homes and other occupied structures. But, um, I can report that the, the staff of this city are working extremely hard with, uh, you know, fewer numbers on hand, um, in order so that the citizens don't, uh, realize any, uh, reduction in the level of service that they're receiving. And just as all of it does, the cities are really pulling together. Very concerned about, uh, the impacts that the pandemic will have on the city financially. It's really impossible for us to know how bad the situation will be from our current perspective, but we know that there is going to be a delay in the revenue streams that are already received from the state because of the postponement, postponement in tax due dates. As well, the state comptroller, um, Susanna Mendoza today announced that, uh, her office will have to delay payments as well. The problem is likely to be compounded. In light of this, the city is going to begin taking measures to preserve the cash that it has on hand to continue to fund daily operations and expenses which have already been incurred. In addition, every department head has been asked to review their twenty-twenty budget to determine whether their expenditures, which can be postponed either until later in the year when we have a clearer picture of what the financial forecast was, um, or until next year. So, um, at one of the very next committee of the meetings, we will expect to be able to present to you, um, what our plan looks like in greater detail. Um, I'm happy to announce that the Community Care Program is up and running as of today. The Community Care, uh, program is meant to be able to run errands for the most vulnerable members of our community, both our seniors and also our, uh, disabled citizens. Of course, if it's something big like, um, a, a financial need or a shelter, two-one-one is the better resource for, for big services like that, and, and two-one-one can connect you with an agency that can meet your needs. But we know that there's a number of individuals in our community that just need someone to run to the store to get them groceries, or to pick up their prescription, uh, from the pharmacy for them. And that's, uh, where the Community Care Program is here to help. And, um, you can reach it, uh, one of two ways. The phone number is six-three-zero-four-five-four-C-A-R-E. Care, or you can, um, email communitycare@cityofbatavia.net. You can also call or email if you would like to volunteer for this program. And we're very grateful to our partners who are providing us with the volunteers for this program, and that's the, um, RSVP organization, as well as our Batavia United Way. We are able to, uh, have our employees, are going to be reaching out to a list that was compiled of all of our seniors in our community to see if they need these services, as well as the, um, those who utilize the Ride and Kane Program. Um, the, from Community and Economic Development, Business Continues. Staff held a conference call with a contract purchaser for the twelve, uh, twelve-sixty Kingsland property, which was a former Plastech building. The prospective purchaser is, uh, currently breaking out of two buildings in West Chicago, and, uh, the purchase and occupancy would be a relocation and expansion of current operations. There are manufacturing concern that has been in operation for more than fifty years, so we, uh, hope that we'll be able to, um, find a way to bring that business into our community. We've also learned that the former Sam's Club building has sold, um, but it, it has, uh, we do not know who the new owner is specifically. They created an LLC for the purchase of, um, purchasing the building, but, um, we are going to continue to try to get in touch with them to learn what their intentions might be. Um, the police reported that at this morning, um, as of this morning, at seven AM, all Tricom user police agencies switched primary radio communications to the Starcom twenty-one radio network, and the transition went very smoothly, and they've experienced no problems so far. There's also a lot going on in Public Works. Area three contractors have completed all underground utility installations at the intersection of Jackson and Walnut, and work continues on the remaining storm sewer and water main connections. The contractor remains on schedule to complete all remaining twenty-nineteen work by early May. The twenty-twenty project is on schedule for commencing construction in early summer. On Main Street, AT&T and Comcast have had crews on site working to relocate their private utility, uh, facilities. The city's tree removal contractor has been mobilized, and tree work and right-of-way clearing will commence in the coming days. Message signs have been on site for the last several days notifying drivers of the pending construction and possible delays. Engineering has been exploring the use of electronic bid platforms. We have interviewed a couple of co- companies for that. Uh, we also have called up other municipalities that have used the software to find out, uh, what type of reference that they would give. Our, um, Public Properties and Services crews are completing the annual right-of-way tree trimming and pruning program. Trees are now, uh, beginning to bud, so routine trimming and pruning will be avoided going forward whenever possible. Scott Haines has developed citywide internal policies for facility cleaning and also for fleet use and disinfection. The policies that Scott is developing are in cor- in accordance with the current CDC and, and other respected research agency guidelines. And also Jeremy Barki of Water Department prepared a public service message about not putting anything but toilet paper into toilets. Um, we've had some issues already, and so have neighboring communities. Um, therefore, we're putting an outreach campaign, um, out there in order to encourage people that a flushable wipe is not a flushable item. Uh, the only thing that should be put in there is, um, toilet paper to make sure that our sanitary systems stay clear of obstructions and that, um, non-biodegradable items don't end up in our wastewater treatment facility that we have made a tremendous, um, investment in. Um, that is all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Laura?
Yes?
I just want to, uh, commend the, uh, the employees that came up with the Community Cares that were on the front lines that do recognize the need, and that they, they showed initiative and were proactive in trying to, uh, think of creative ways that, they're showing ways that the city can help. I, I really appreciate, uh, those employees that were involved in it.
Yes, and that was Rhonda Klez, our Code Enforcement Officer, as well as, um, John Dillon, um, who is a retiree but still very much involved here as a contract employee, as a, and as a board member of both RSVP and the Batavia United Way. And also on the committee to create this was recently retired member of our electric department, Greg Hodge.
All right, any other que- uh, questions to the city administrator? Okay, moving to committee reports. Uh, City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Um, not much to report, um, other than kind of a plea. I don't know how many people go, get, actually get to see this eventually, but we got to make sure that we really do a better job of disposing of protection. I'll say the rubber gloves, mask, anything that gets used on a one-time basis going out to a store or anything else needs to end up in a garbage can, not in the street or in the parking lot. That's all I have.
Or flush down the toilet.
That too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Government Services, Alderman Chanset? Okay, uh, Community Development, Alderman Callahan?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, and, uh, Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
I don't know that Alderman O'Brien has audio yet, uh, so I would just say nothing to report at this time.
Nothing to report. Okay, do we have other business from the council?
Mr. Mayor, just really quick.
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, regarding the controlled burns out at the, uh, the wetland areas, um, I just want to encourage people to not, we already have the ban in effect for brush and leaves, but at this time where people are cooped up, it's allergy season, um, to be mindful of your fire pits and your barbecues as there are, at least I know in my neighborhood, people with respiratory concerns. And I know with the concern that they have with already pre-existing respiratory concerns, uh, the amplification with, uh, COVID-nineteen has them very nervous, so if we could maybe, uh, be considerate of our neighbors, that they may not be suffering the way you might think they are.
Well, thank you for that observation. Uh, Alderman Callahan and I got involved in that situation in his ward yesterday. We had a situation where there was some burning going on, which was causing some distress for some neighbors, and uh, with the assistance of the Batavia Fire Department, we corrected the problem, but I, again, I would second what Alderman Callahan just said about being, you know, present with your neighbors and trying to watch out that we're not fumigating the neighborhoods with smoke and, uh, causing others to have a problem. So with all the people now kind of pent up and anchored down, uh, this can be, as I heard the other day when they were, they were burning off those wetlands, that, uh, that was very problematic out in Tanglewood and Weaver Landing subdivision. So we, we really got to watch that very carefully. And the fire department is under orders, if somebody starts to burn, we'll be right out there to clear out, and then you'll have to deal with the mess that will be created by that. So I, I just want to put everybody on notice that that's the city's policy at the moment, if, if somebody wants to, you know, think they're going to get rid of something, uh, that has been become already a problem in the city. Anybody, any other committee reports? Anybody else who wants to add anything? Under the, under the mayor's report, a lot of what I was going to say has already been covered by others, so I thank you for that. One thing I just would like to mention is, uh, the call two-one-one system is available in Illinois and, in Batavian and Kane County, largely through the efforts of Melinda Kent from United Way. And, uh, I know a number of residents who've told me that they have used it, when specifically they had questions about the coronavirus, or they wanted to know about, uh, you know, where they could find an emergency bus or a taxi cab. They've, a lot of people use that for a variety of reasons, and it really has proven to be quite valuable and beneficial to the community. So I'm very pleased that we do have that service, and that's, uh, another one that people are having to use on occasion, and it is working out very well for us. I would also suggest that, uh, we've got a couple of organizations in town that, one's called Taking Care of Our, of Our Caretakers, and that's a group, uh, that's out trying to raise some money, and then they're buying lunch from local restaurants that are also struggling right at the moment, and having them delivered to healthcare providers and public safety representatives and all those in the community who are out there helping others. So that is a, another situation that Batavia has risen, risen to the occasion and done quite a bit to help ourselves and, uh, not ask for any state or federal money. It's just Batavia helping Batavia. And I think there's a very, very strong and significant message in that, that Batavia is here trying to take care of ourselves and, and show our appreciation and love and concern and sincerity for our fellow residents. So I'm very proud of that activity that's going on, and that, that's being conducted largely with a lot of help of just private citizens who want to get involved at this troubling time and show some support. So I just take my hat off to everybody that's doing that and let us continue to do it. The final thing I'd like to just talk about is, was that, uh, this whole Corona thing has really caused a major backup of community life in Batavia at a lot of fronts, including the schools, the parks, the, the city governments, and certainly the business community. Uh, like Laura and several of you who already mentioned, I have very strong concerns that we're going to have a few of our businesses that are going to come out of this very badly damaged and may not physically be able to reopen, and that's going to be kind of a tragic set of events, but we'll watch and see what happens there. The other thing I would like to say is, is that, uh, we've got some community traditions in this town that have long been held. Uh, one of them is coming up this year for its seventieth anniversary, and that is the July Fourth fireworks program, which is still on tap to be fired at nine-thirty at the, uh, Engstrom Park area, or across the street from Batavia High School on Main Street. Uh, the fireworks committee continues to work diligently to kind of put that show together. Uh, with all the other stuff that's happened in the rather recent past here, that their fundraising has really hit a wall for the few moments, and they need, do need to raise some more money to pay for this year's show. They have some money in the bank, but they certainly could use some other, a few more healthy donations. And so if anybody really has a passion for that, I think the community, my experience and history of this has been that when people find out that that one is in trouble, we've had this happen before, and people have risen to the occasion, and at the night of the fireworks have known, not before, and given a lot of money to pay for that. So, uh, that show has been paid for for seventy years without any tax dollars being pumped into it. And that's a record of community support and sincerity and love of country that is probably second to none in the, in the country, and something that Batavia should be very, very proud of itself on, that we've fired fireworks to celebrate our country's birthday for seventy years, and we've never used public tax dollars to pay for it. And so I just think that's a tradition that I think we should fight long and hard to see that continue on in that format. The other one is, is that, you know, we continue to have our plans. I think they may have been somewhat delayed by what's happened for the Flag Day Monument out here on the west side of City Hall, but they're still, the Flag Day Committee is still planning to have a Flag Day program on Sunday, June fourteenth, and it's going to be in the afternoon, and they're going to serve some refreshments, and the community band's going to play, and there's a bunch of other activities that are going to take place. So, uh, we are trying to hold on, and hopefully the Corona thing will be behind us by either July fourth or June fourteenth, and we'll be able to pull both of those events off and continue on some grand traditions that, again, speak to the livelihood and the commitment of Batavia to its, commitment to its nation, and it's our belief and the American ideals and the- and the democracy that we benefit from. So I just want to, again, thank everybody from our community who has stepped forward to do all this, because it really, I think, makes us shine as a community and something that a lot of other towns look with great envy upon, that we have such a dynamic spirit of working together and togetherness found in the community of Batavia. Nothing further? I guess I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. Court, take a voice vote.
Law in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all.